Did he give the plain confidence? Zone commission come to order? We have a number of items on the agenda today. The amendments of the zoning commission are reported and transmitted to the county trustees. Anybody who's in favor of the custom modus operandi, testimony to the board today, will be asked to take it both. Specifically, we ask that you address the board with your comments and not address an opposing person or applicant. Anyone who's voting in favor today will raise your right hand. You saw these were a perfect testimony today as a truth, so help me God.
Yes.
Okay, make sure you sign them with your name and address and the reference volunteer. Mr. Cropper, are we going to take the roll call thing? Mr. Calder?
President.
Mr. Seberg, please come in here. Mr. Brandbacher? Mr. Crawford?
President.
And Mr. Harris? Here. Welcome to the order as any of us are voting. Are you just serving as our alibi?
How much will it change the price of the lots? It's made a lot of difference that we're not counting this big one.
Yes.
And he said he wanted to make sure it's more affordable for people. So how much of this will change the price of the lots?
Yeah, um. I, I, what, what we have, again, uh.
Mr. Costner, can you repeat the question for the audience and the video, please?
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes.
My question is, how does this? How, what would be the cost, average cost difference in general of the new houses in the new area versus the houses that are currently built? How is that going to be a forming? How much more affordable they will be?
Okay, um. Again, the market conditions will always affect what's going on. Um, just to kind of take some examples of some of the largest lots. It might have like a hundred foot upstream from them versus, you know, what we're asking for is sixty foot. So that's a forty percent reduction in the amount of cost that would build that lot. So, you know, I don't want to sit here and say, you know, it's going to reduce, you know, any specific dollar amount, but it will allow them to maintain more of what, what they are building now for a longer period of time. Um, and, and I know we're looking for a number, but I'm not. I don't like giving numbers. I can't predict the future. But this way we can keep the lots at a lower price as opposed to a escalated price. But in the short term, if that makes sense.
Well, I suppose so. I guess I just want to.
I, I, I.
If I built the exact same house on a fifteen thousand square foot lot versus a twelve thousand square foot lot, what would be the difference in price? That's my question.
Okay, I guess I could say. I, I can anticipate the lot price when we reduce it anywhere from, you know, ten thousand to twenty thousand, I guess, a lot is what I'm, you know, taking as I think.
So these people, sorry, do these people buy the lot and then they should build it on us? Or they build the house and then sell it on us?
We, we're just a developer. So we're developing it, um, and then we sell it to a builder. Uh, in this situation out here, we have a structure field, uh, national builder, and so they have control over the lot.
Right, got it. Thank you.
And I guess I could also add, you know, here's some things. Um, in the, in the last phase out here on Peporo Row, those houses were easily pushing well over three hundred thousand dollars. We actually had one out there that was hit four hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, I also say over at Edgewood where we have the narrow lots, they are averaging close to that three hundred thousand dollars. So, but whatever we're going to do with the next phase, if the prices keep escalating, then so it's, it's just forcing a buyer to put more money into the land as opposed to putting it in the house. It, it, it's general affordability is what, is what we're after. That's what the object is, to get the dollar value.
For Harrison, do you have anything?
I do. Thank you.
Let's talk about this a little bit, okay? Has it twenty years or?
That's correct.
Was executed between your company and the township sometime in two thousand three, two thousand four?
That's correct.
So we've got about two, three years left.
Correct.
So why now? Why are you looking to modify it now as opposed to five years ago or three years ago? What, what's, what's the dynamic for you?
Again, there was, there was a buildup with, uh, selling the lots. Um, it just, you know, we kept on pushing, pushing up the price to sell the lots. You know, we're sharing that with the builders and saying, hey, here's where the costs are. And there's like, we don't get margins to support this. And, you know, so then we worked together, margins were squeezed. So I think this is just something that's been building. Um, it was also helpful and reinforced with, uh, the Edgewood project. Um, we went through a long process to get that rezoned, uh, and allow the newer lots. And to give an example over there, which is, this is good. We developed two phases at Edgewood. So there's the north phase, which has the bill of lots, and those are all sixty foot. And there was thirty eight of those. We also at the same time built Phase Two, which is on the south side. And those are, uh, right consider larger lots and actually mirroring the lots in the stone inch. And those are approximately, are averaging from a hundred, just a hundred foot front inch. Um, so they both hit the market at the same time. The thirty eight lots, the narrow lots, sold, all thirty eight sold out within one year. On the lots that are the same size or the large lots in the south, when you sold one. Now, obviously, there's a price difference in what you're selling lots for, the narrow lots for, versus the lots, the larger lots in the lot. And to get anything years ago, that I think the price difference there was, uh, I want to say was twenty thousand, maybe thirty thousand, there was the price of lots. And again, there was often, obviously, other factors. I can't say that was the only reasons, but that I think is, uh, big, one of the things that really came to our, our side to say, hey, what's, what's going on here? Uh, and again, there was a conversation with the national builder, and he said, you know, most places we're working here, there's, there's, there are lots, just, that's what people want. Again, the people want to take that money, so the final lot, final land, they take that and put it in the amendments, and they are selling a lot more than they're wanting.
Okay, so let me try and understand what you're saying. Under the new proposal, the lots will be smaller, but there will be no more of them?
That is correct.
And you're charging less for the smaller ones? That's the plan. You still told them ten to twenty percent less?
Okay.
That's your suggestion. So why not just sell the bigger lots for those smaller price?
We, we literally are upside down here to do that.
Are you even upside down?
But it, it costs more to build a big lot, so how can you sell a big lot for less? So to reduce, if you ask.
It costs more because of its three foot.
Yes, yes.
And it costs, you mean, uh, putting in those trees?
Yes, yes. And also, like you put out, it's not just, we're not doing everything for the small lots. We're going to do a variety of lots. Because again, we have to try to get as much market as we can. Now, some people, they won't come in and say, hey, I'm willing to pay the extra price to have a bigger lot. They will probably build the same size home, and your bigger home, but they'll be their choice. But again, they, they will have an option.
Okay, um, let me ask another question. Do homeowners in Saratoga Hills pay uniform H O A fee annually?
That's correct, yes.
So whether they're on a small lot or a condo lot, they're arguing, saying?
That's correct, yes.
Do you envision any, uh, cuts in or reinforcement ability for the H O A because of the different financial positions of the, of the different owners? And what their investments are, what their amount to pay?
No, no, we do not. And again, our, our driver point would be with the H O A, these are the things that you're getting with your home association here. The big one being the community center, the pool, um, so each household has access to that, and they're paying their share of maintaining. There also, there's, there's other things out there, the street signs, the street lights, that they give those. So, uh, again, you know, we would not say, well, hey, you know, your lot is, we have to pay more for you as small as I can. We don't think that's, no, we think it is more what you are getting for your H O A needs.
And the owner communicates over a road, a building, and a yard?
Absolutely, yes, yes.
Got it. Okay, so is the, uh, let me look at the, yeah, my view is here to compare what the current agreement is as opposed to what you're calling down, so we can fully understand, uh, that this is really, uh, something that might be done, so it's supposed to develop, and, and, uh, again, what it sounds like is if you're making the same number of lots, but mostly different areas, smaller, or some of them are very smaller, uh, there's usually more open space, right?
Uh, there is more open space, yes. With, with the original, yes.
The original commitment was that there'd be, uh, believe thirty five percent, or maybe that's five, I mean, I think you have been in a agreement where I think there'd be guaranteed minimum of fifteen percent open space in the given contract. Does that sound about right?
No, I, I, I believe, um, there, there's, there's, what you guys originally had was there was the agreement that was in two thousand three, and then there was this revised agreement in two thousand four. And the revised agreement in two thousand four, it is not, it calls for open space, but it does not identify a percentage issue. And I, and I guess I'll also backtrack a little bit. Whenever we said, hey, we're creating open space, yes, we're creating more open space. We're also creating some larger lots, which would soak up the extra acreage that is now being used for more lots.
The declaration of the covenant and restrictions that I showed as a copy of what the township approved for executing in two thousand four had, I think, two K, fifty percent open.
And that's the one that was in two thousand four, the board's office on the front page.
This is on our board's office, it's been provided for me from, uh, from plain town, uh, as the document approved by the, uh, by resolution. You know, it really doesn't matter what, what it says on that. Are you able to give us a better description of the only fifty percent open space in the, in the drive?
I, I, yes, I will give you assurance that as much of that, there is more open space in this revised man than what there was in the original. I don't want to, I don't want to limit to the fifteen percent because I think the actual number thing up to like fourteen point six something, 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 so.
Okay. So, um, the original contract we call for the duration, I think, would be twenty years from the date of the report. Is this, I, is this proposal you're having, when likewise, would it end at that anniversary date?
No.
Or is there be no endpoint to it?
Uh, I, no, there will be an end date to it. We will extend it. I believe we're proposing to extend it another twenty years where the date will be signed.
Okay, I see. And so, and so am I understanding you correctly that you, you are envisioning entering a model of changing this agreement in the form of another agreement that would go for another twenty years, uh, with, uh, the adjustments made in this new application?
Correct. And, and, and the only adjustments we're going to change in the, from the original agreement is just that the master and the plan would change. It shows us more.
You know, I was a member of the commission when this was first submitted years ago. But this actually looks like that at the time, quite a bit of someone's cutting edge project for this time. And what is interesting to me is we don't often see an agreement between a developer and a township to commit the certain things over a goal of the code actually required. But we have done that, and we've, we've done that years ago. And now they're asking us to modify that, and so I'm, I'm wanting to be assured that these cutting edge things and these commitments that you all mean in this phase are, um, still going to be the norm of your quality operation.
I would, I would like to reassure you with that. Um, I would also expand a little bit on that. Uh, I'm representing McKinley Development. McKinley Development is fifty percent to eleven, fifty percent to eighty. Both of them are long established, local developers in the area here. Uh, we have many, some very successful projects that we would be more happy to show anybody, tour anybody in a very crowded state. Saratoga Hills is, we think, is a wonderful project. Uh, we are here committed to see it through the end, and that is why we're here trying to do this. We put that on our own terms, let the agreement run out, we, you know, try to flip it and sell it. And we, we can do other things, but that's not what we're about, not what we want to do. So again, I hope that also extends and, uh, gives you confidence that we are here to see this project through as originally committed in plain name.
As you know, a rezoning does not necessarily prove your submitting a revised development plan later that might or might not have the same number of lots that you are controlling in your current development. Are you saying that the contractual agreement before that limited to three hundred and fifty six lots? Is still going to be, uh, something that you and the town, your, the operating township department are going to be really ongoing forward?
Absolutely. And that is why, we, that's why we included the words mill to you guys tonight, so that you guys knew and understood that there's more to the deal here. Obviously, at the end of the day, the township trustees wants to have a sign off. And if we want you to know that we, you know, what the full deal was, we just didn't want to come here and what we're going to just say, hey, I want to do this, rezone these areas. We want to show you guys the complete plan. Because if you guys are noticing that, that you're not getting the whole picture, it's just not fair. And that's why we moved it to dispense. Yes, we are planning this, to the township trustees, and asking them to continue.
I have another question related to the fact that in this proceeding, we filed an additional application asking that part of this rezoning R two. And then in the process, and I guess with conversations with the township zoning department administration, we modified that back to a one A.
That, that is correct. That is correct. And I'd expand a little bit on that. Uh, we, we, we contemplated this, we mentioned originally back when, uh, the township, Tom, uh, zoning, we talked through it and said, hey, this is what we're trying to do. These are the things that we see in the code, and this is how we think we should get there. And we believed at the time, with Tom, that R two was the right way to get there. It was a much more challenging one. We still wanted the same thing, the same thing I'm asking for tonight, my goals tonight, the same thing that I wanted when I was asking for R two. We just thought that that was the right path to go. So this goes to regional planning before you guys get it. And regional planning questioned the R two, and they made a suggestion about the R one A. So then we regrouped with Tom, reread it, I believe, Tom consulted with, uh, the township legal people, and came back and said, yeah, you know what, the R one A does work, and, uh, that's where we should go. So we withdrew our R two request and resubmitted the R one A. Uh, again, it was always the same intention. We're never, ever going to build duplexes out there. We just want that was the zone that we had before.
And again, I really want to mention in years back, versus the process, that it's my understanding that the R one A was the development passed at our county, subsequent to your original planning meeting, who uh, as a mitigating, so to speak, because the township changed the lot size requirements significantly from our lot
Yes.
from when this thing was originally
Yes, sir.
to today. And the R one A was in that past as kind of a mitigation for those developers, like themselves, that started projects under the old lot sizes, but were now facing market and other issues. And did a, uh, some relief on lot size, but still have an R one A in it. And that was the R one A. Is my understanding correct?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. The R one A, I mean, Tom, I can explain a little more specifically, but it was created after our original project to address this exact scenario, um, so, yes.
And so, uh, I'm going to wind up with that. Is it my understanding at this point really was we're trying to do is take advantage of a, of a zone of a, that's a case of opportunity that did not exist at the time of the original application. But would now you have, would you guys have a, would you be making a new application?
Yes, that is true.
Mr. Feeburger?
I think that, uh, Mr. Harris, Harrison, did everything I wanted. But let me just give you, just give me one second, please, that I was curious about, I'm curious if, you know, one, of whether it would be a common play with a new, with the trust fees. A new, with the trust fees, and they've only said, yes, it is actually a common play. So it's typically, you see these development plans, uh, when you walk out with a zone change, you can do anything with the, the zone, and it's here. What you're doing is, I'm playing, I think that's a, I think that's a good point.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have anything else. I might get something later.
Okay, um, and we realized while looking at the agenda that maybe I should have done this earlier. But in the mention of the Stark County Regional Planning Commission, I don't know if everyone's familiar with that, but that's the county. Looks at the county master planner, and then the township master plan, see if the, if the application is aligned with those master plans and those that are at higher level. And the most current recommendation from the Regional Planning Commission or R T C is that the application we approved is updated. For any fourth area, so. Um, they also recommend that this policy area is in delineation of the plan, we're involved, or can be enjoy a district of large undeveloped areas, helping to draw the technical development. I don't know if that's, I don't have time, that's sort of secondary recommendation. So I, I'm not going to read the whole recommendation, it's too lengthy. But that's ultimately what they recommend.
I was chime in a little bit, um, on the T U D, technically. This is taking a step back after the very beginning. It's very much in the P U D. Uh, we did contemplate this the first time we came in and talked with the township about the rezoning. Just, but again, didn't think it really fit because most of the amenities were already existing, built in the first phase, and tried to work that into the zoning, just, our request just didn't seem to fit really well. And that's why we came to ask for it, to ask.
And I'm, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, whether we should follow secondary recommendation or not, just something that I'm sure that Tom will take into consideration for later evaluation on the order that comes up.
Correct.
Uh, but I was telling you about the recommendation, but I thought I'd go ahead and quickly. So I don't think it's flawed, secondary recommendation is for future applications, not this one. Okay, is there anything else? Anybody have a follow up question?
I want to.
Please, one more question. Karen, you can ask him. Any question would be welcome.
This is just a kind of curiosity. It's been your experience, it's been your experience with the other developers, the, the situation, sorry. Can you give us an example? If I'm going to decide by twelve thousand square foot lot instead of eighty thousand square foot lot, but I only have X amount of dollars to spend, what kind, you're saying that if everybody pays an N S N cost, what kind of thing is this person passing out with the money they're saving on the lot? Do you say that?
Some, some examples, uh, with the builder, they were finishing off the basements. Uh, they were doing upgraded trim packages inside the house. Uh, also, you know, remember these people building their houses? First thing they have to do is they're putting decks on it, patios. So now they have to re, they have to use the resources to do that, most of the, you know.
Thank you.
There, there's actually national trends that say that people, there's, trend is towards people don't want to spend as much time in the yard as what they did in the house. I'm not saying everybody's that way, we can jump the tracks. That's it.
Okay, is there anything further, uh, for Costner?
Not at this time, but I'm always here to hear the other questions.
Okay, I will ask you to, is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the amendment? Okay, um, who's here to speak against the amendment? There were three of you, I believe, that had your hands up, just two?
Pass the mic.
Yeah. Start off by saying your name and address.
My name is. My name is Tom Crover. I live at Seven O, Seven Oil Plant, three Avenue, Northeast, North Canton, Ohio, four, four, seven, they get two, seven, four, four, seven, three, one. I have lived at this address for forty two years. And, uh, my neighbor that lives across the street from me on Pine Tree has lived there for fifty years. I attended meetings in two thousand two, two thousand three, and I have information from that. And I hear a voice line, opposition to the smaller lots and the bed and streets. Presentation and handout, follow.
Sure, would you like some assistance with some of that?
No, it's, uh, you know, if you carry stuff outside and, uh, it's in the wind, and, uh, you gotta do what you gotta do.
I can just see the fire chief back there.
Number one is notifications. Uh, I'm curious about how many people were notified that this, uh, zone change?
Tom is eighty six. Notice this one out?
About eighty six people. There's, uh, everybody that touches.
Yeah, correct. Okay, then, uh, the, the paper that I backed, of course, is from Wayne, and I'm said, and across the street. So it's no longer across the street?
Everybody, across the street comes.
Whoa, okay, I clocked one answer across the street, then everybody got the letter.
We, we did, we, our best effort to give.
Okay, I'm changing, I'm, I'm just, uh.
You talked about across the street from the, from the property rezon.
Across the street from the room.
The, it, it does, the original. Not the original two hundred and eighty, it's just what I asked. Only that acreage that is.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to hold that, and then I got that, okay. I, I got my original letter, so, and the original drawings of two thousand three. Shows, uh, shows all streets are through streets. There are no bed and streets. This is a better original drawing showing this area here, and all the streets are through streets.
Sir, did you direct your comments?
Excuse me, okay, all the streets are through streets except for, I think, there was one. And, uh, it's, it's very hard for me to understand how lots are smaller and they're the same number. I, uh, I was there at the meeting, and I realized it was, uh, two hundred and some lots. I just don't see how, when you look at that drawing, you can see that, how they can be, how they can be the same number of lots. Uh, it, it doesn't matter in the. The company statement that I got in all the office, the last sentence says, the main desire for us of that move to the R two, some means will allow there, or across the narrow lot, help address the housing affordability in market, allowing a wider range of buyers an opportunity to buy, and buy their home. And the camp repository, they have a transfer to the Regal State Friday, October ninth, uh, twenty twenty one. Uh, a parcel was sold on Pine Tree Avenue. And there's, the street's not there, so there's no avenue. It's parcel 1, 0, 0, 1, 3, 2, 6, 5, 68,000 dollars. Now, the way it looks to me, here Pine Tree comes up, that's the smaller lots. This one is from 9/17/19. And it shows one dead end street.
Sir, would you show them that?
One dead end street.
No, no, I appreciate that. I just wanted to try and help you out.
One, one dead end street. And the map that I got, I was township officer a couple of months ago. They've got three dead end streets. Now, these two are going about my lot and my neighbor plot the lower ridge. And Pine Tree comes right over there. They, if you call them cul-de-sacs, you can call them whatever you want. And everybody waits hastily, this is nice. People aren't going to be driving in and out of that tree. Well, if the subject player is old and you want the avenue that you come, you want them to come to your house. And you want them to get there. And everybody's got a GPS now. And they don't necessarily put in there. And what about the police? And what about the fire trucks? The worst thing is with the dead end streets are the garbage trucks. I'm 75 years old and I see what's going on a lot. There's four garbage trucks and I never. And you know, both Republic and Pimble, their trucks are 45, 50 foot long because they put that box out in front where they hit the can up. You know? How would they be getting in and out of these streets? And the garbage trucks are once a week. Well, what about the school buses? All these kids don't have to walk to the end of these streets? You know, is that in the best inference of the township? I understand roads cost more, but when I go to Lowe's to buy two by fours, if they're eight dollars today, that's what I got paid, eight dollars. I just don't think the dead end streets are reasonable. I just don't. And sure, it's going to cost a lot, some of them. It turns out like that. If you have to be the person that needs an ambulance or a fire truck or the police, you know, you might not be too happy when they don't show up or because they can't find out exactly where they got built. I got some handouts here and I'll hand them out. The lot size, the number of lots, has Camden approved the sewer and water because it looks to me like there's more lots there than there's before, even though you say there isn't. And it would seem to me.
Sir, would you like your comments to the board, sir?
Sorry.
It's okay. Every comment is fair.
It would seem to me that Camden, because they already said they give sewer and water, would have approved it. It seems to me with smaller lots, there's more lots out there, whatever it says. Now, it's going from $15,000 to $12,000. At the meeting that I left in 2003, it was a half acre, which was $20,000. So I guess the amendment you were talking about for 2004, I guess that's when it went to $15,000. I guess. It's the only thing I can imagine. But that lot that I just mentioned on Pine Tree, it's $68,000. Now, I understand you put in the streets and the water and the sewer. I understand that, but it is what it is. And affordability is, I go to a lender and I'd say, I'd like to build a house. And then he tells me whether I can or not. This is, you can and you can't. This ain't all once. Well, I think I'll have no house, so nothing like that. The flow of traffic is terrible with the dead end streets. And like I said, I'll hand you out. The zone change will create nothing by making smaller lots. And I think there's more lots in there. I don't think the zone change, it gives a plain township and the residents of Royal Ridge are asking the trust to go along with standard. I got my name and my full number app at the end of this and I'll be having to.
You want to give it to me? I'll pass it down.
Sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
I'd say I'd like to. So your objections are, so your objections are dead end streets, access to city utilities, water, et cetera?
Well, no, we'll probably get that in. We got it all together in $20,000. I just want to know the word of mouth.
I see. You realize we don't have control over.
No, everything's on.
The width of the streets and the cul-de-sacs, the size of them, and your concern about larger angles? I might be wrong, but I'm believing that is a matter for subdivision regulations that are uniformly applied in the county. And when this applicant goes to plat those lots and those allotments, he has to get that approved based on the same regulations everybody in the county has to, has to have submitted. So I hear you're concerned that streets are too narrow for bitten vehicles?
Well, I'm only saying, there's no, if they drive in, they're not going to get anywhere without. They may not get anywhere. They may not get in. In today's world, it seems like there's a lot more people moving in houses than there used to. And the first sign of that, mutually, is there's more cars around. And the next thing that happens is they close the road off because they're making moves. And that's happening in Royal Ridge. Now, you cannot prevent anyone from moving more people in a house or saying, well, my kids, I got some more of the lead people, they're going to be here. And once you get four cars, a two car driveway on the way up, if there are vehicles in the street and you can't say no pardon. So this is my concern about the cul-de-sacs.
That might be bigger than what we can handle.
Well, I'm bringing in the vehicles thing, you know. I love the notice. I appreciate the notice. I got very good treatment when I was in Old Room. They made me copies and everything. And I live in this township and I'm proud of this township. I'm very proud. We don't have a dozen village and we're not broke. That's a big deal. All people together. And my concern is the streets are not through streets. If the lot size is going to be smaller, that's right. But the throughs, the streets ought to go through. People that cannot find the street are unhappened. When they're unhappy, sometimes their minds get blocked. They don't, they don't drive like they normally do because they're little. So I, I've got problems.
I think that's the same thing as well as in a speeding accident.
You have, for example, fire managers, you know, the truck comes out, the fire truck is coming out, not gathering. And it's about equipment and having more people to help you whatever it is. I just don't think in our situation that.
Tom?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Are you through, sir?
Yes, sir.
I didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
Thank you.
Was there anybody else had a question? Tom, can you address some of the issues you have about the fire department and the school buses and such? But I believe that department is packed with municipality or some of it.
When, when the plans, when McKinley Development puts their plans together, those plans go to Stark County Regional Plan. Stark County Regional Plan sends those plans out to Stark County Engineer, to Stark County Sewer, to Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Department. I don't know about Sheriff's Department. They send it to the college. They send it to our road department. And they send them to us. The, the plans have to get approval from our fire department, in our road department, before it can go on. The road department has snowplows, which take a really wide turn. So the streets have to be big enough for that to turn around. Our fire trucks are extremely large and they have to be able to turn around. So once we get the approval from the fire department and the road department, we can send in our suggestions to Regional Plan. But, but we make sure that the vehicles can turn around and the streets are, and the county engineer looks at the width. They have, they have set the width for the.
My concern is people are not going to find the street because it doesn't go through. That's all. So hey, that's the play.
There was, in the black sweatshirts from Chassis System, I believe you went and raised your hand a couple of times?
Yep.
We pass off the microphone there. Here comes Tom with the microphone. You would, you can speak from back there or you can come up here and give whatever you're more comfortable with.
All right. I have concerns. I think that Paul in 3325 Calera Street. 3320. Oh, Paul, we take that one out.
Haluera Street.
My concern are, the front of Botler right now is probably the least amount of, the smaller lot that you can have right now, I'm assuming. And if they're going to be smaller yet, those people on a lot, they cannot even start cars in front of their house and have very much road space. I'm sure this is the first time you've heard complaints of Botler. It is dangerous. There are children that are going to get hurt and it's, it's not a good scenario. So if you make those lots smaller, even though they're in the inside of the lot, you're going to have just as big a problem. And chances are you're going to have a lot of children in those homes that are more affordable. So that's a concern if I was a resident in there. The second concern would be the difference in values might be real here. They're going to have 300, 400,000 dollar homes in and developing. And then they're going to stick to homes that are family of $150,000 or $100,000 less in the development. Maybe it won't be that drastic, I don't know. But then you have those people that are going to be concerned about their values being around and near that area where they might be lower values of homes. Just something that I would think about if I was a resident. So those were the concerns. Now I have some questions, just because I lived in the Budland gets property, I live at a dead end of Calera. So that was potentially supposed to be a through street there. I'm not sure if those through streets are still ongoing to happen or if that has changed. I don't know if any of you know.
Well, there's a.
Pardon me? Calera?
Some of the northeast side of Remington.
It's, you take Botler to Airshire, Airshire gets Calera.
Okay.
And what do you see on the street, Calera and what?
Airshire.
Well, you can hop to Airshire, hop to Botler, and then Calera, they're going to go right or left on Calera. My dead end, I have to go right, dead end into the field.
Your concern is one second of the year?
No, I don't. I just wanted to know if that gets changed. You know.
Does it help care?
Oh, I care. I didn't tap lots of funds, I know I still do. Okay. The other thing is, I don't think the farmer is farming this year. At least I haven't seen any signs of that. So what happens to the field that's left until it's developed? Is it just going to be a nuisance? Is it going to be cut, mowed down? Is it going to, you know, bring them a lot more wildlife? Mice? Concerns for the neighbors that I'm here representing a few farmers that come here tonight and just wanting to know what's going to happen with that kind of stuff.
So there's an open space you're describing as one that's been farmed?
That's developed, a land that was, what you developed.
Or is this farm that's, is in crop or is not?
Not this year. It has been farmed. The way I understand it, it has been leased to the farmer in the years past, what, 18 years?
Soybean.
Sometimes corn, but soybean, they're corn. And this year it doesn't exist and it's been planted. So we weren't sure what plans were for that land until they developed. I don't know. Do you know a number of how many houses in that area that are going to be smaller? Is there a number?
It probably is a number, I don't know what it would be.
We might be able to get that in combination with.
The other concern I have is the current builder, that most of the houses have been built in five. Some of them, when it first was developed, I understand, were done by London and Behoff. Am I correct?
No idea.
No idea.
How do you hear about your character?
My objection is that now it's Ryan Homes. And Ryan Homes is getting a bad reputation. People won't even come in the area and look at these homes a lot because of Ryan Homes. I've recommended people that I know to come and, and look at the houses and they said, absolutely not, we're not buying Ryan Homes. So that again affects the value of plain township residents. I know they're everywhere, but they're, they're not a good choice. So I don't know if that's the only builder that's going to be allowed to come in there. Maybe I should address the testings. I don't know. Wrong meaning to that.
Well, we're glad to have you here. We're glad to hear your feedback.
I'll see if I can take it up there.
While you're looking, Tom is there? Did you have notice or have you been made aware of the problem? Traffic on Botler?
We, I, we've had some complaints of speed on Botler.
Did you have anything else you'd like to add at all?
Just to clarify, is your concern about the front of Botler, that the yards, the front facing that street will be narrower?
Well, I'm assuming narrower this way.
So then here's the street, because my understanding is going to be the same frontage. They're going to be, right? They're going to be narrower.
Narrower and shorter. Right. So now I have more cars on the street than if, I was actually going to buy Botler.
I.
From, by the parking lot. Any plain township resident can tell you, is he not here?
From, from extra cars parking on the street.
Extra cars, so the plane sidewalks being walked on and flashback traffic trying to get through there.
Got to drive 60 miles an hour to there.
And that's, I'm not saying that. I know people that do that because you can't go over 25. If you go over 25, you're going to hurt somebody with a kid car down the street.
What's, Andrew, do you remember what the speed limit there was?
It was 40.
On Botler? I don't, I don't remember it being posted, but.
It's a combination of 25 and 40, depending upon where you're at.
Now, it was never, it was always like, before the houses were built, it was like 45.
Yeah.
It was always 45.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time. Now, one last chance. Does anybody else who wants to speak? If not, go back to the board. Do we have any other questions for the developer based on what was presented?
I have some follow up questions. There's no one else who wants to speak it out of the.
Okay. We'll close the, the board, except for remember who was. Okay, and we'll close this, uh, the floor except for members who are trying to, to call.
I'm going to ask a kind of open-ended question. Is there anything that you've heard in terms of questions that you believe are probable that you could, you could respond to and help our...
Yes.
...community or, or...
I, I'm willing to just kind of openly respond to them, willing to answer any specific questions if I can. So, uh, just, kind of, that is kind of kind of in on the streets, whole sex. Um, that stuff kind of all comes down to the state fire marshals, they look at it. Uh, the county engineers, they, all of those are all standard size streets, turn arounds and all the same. Um, everything, it is submitted, reviewed by the county, all is tied to the nine-one-one system. Uh, so whatever you do, the streets, they're all lobbying their fire trucks.
And I want to be clear though, there is, if I correct my understanding, there is a root disposition to extensive streets rather than making, that, that whole section allowed. Can I ask you, that's, that's the general concept that regional planning drives at first?
Yes, if you, uh, and they do have rules, uh, you know, how long a whole section be, uh, there is guidelines for all that, and that's what they do review. Uh, you know, some people like living whole sections, but they like the, you know, the privacy. I mean, not having a bunch of through traffic, you know. I did hear, kind of, did hear, you know, talking about that road, which I probably learned that. That was a through street, a lot of traffic. And then the whole sex, which wouldn't have a lot of traffic. So, you know, again, some people like, liked one thing, some people like some other things, uh, you can't have both. Um, so, again, everything is following, uh, county, regional plan standards as far as the layout. Uh, as far as utilities, uh, that's part of the smittle to regional planning. Yes, there is adequate sewer capacity in the entire project and water capacity for those. Uh, that road, yeah. That road was, I think, was always a got-through road, or, you know, it was just a big road. Since the development has come in there, um, it was petitioned and they reduced it, which they shut up. They reduced it from forty or forty-five down to twenty-five on the side. It's a, it's a subdivision street, all those whole things and stuff. Uh, so, you know, if there's any problems out there, you know. Believe the police said at the end that they, the message got real fast, you know, that was, was slowed down in the process there. Uh, yeah. Again, the, you know, smaller lots do not equal smaller homes. And that's what, and I would, the example, the example I would give would be over at Kenwood. Those, they're the bully most home that's, that's entirely on that lot, squeezed into the back. Uh, so I wanted to make that point. Okay, that, that's, and I'm going to open any, answering some questions.
And Rob? Okay.
Mike?
You can, you can ask one question, I'm going to want to state out that, make it moving.
Okay.
Are you torn already?
No.
Please raise your right hand, if you're by, there, front. That's what I'm about to do, to prove something out to God. Okay. Please, if you would, please defend.
Yeah, my name is Carol, right back to you. Here lives about thirty-two oh four, Calera Street.
Carol Freedom?
Great. Great. G R A H K. Um, my question is, our lot is going, is at the field or behind where all the houses are going to go in? How much traffic now are we going to get on Botler through that development? Because right now, they are speeding down our street because it's a cut, they're coming from their houses behind. Coming down Botler, going out, um, to, uh...
Water Church.
Water Church. Um, but that's my biggest concern with traffic, because traffic right now is terrible on the street. And there are a lot of children, people, residents are putting up, you know, signs to drive slow, um, you know, because of children.
Okay.
But my, that's one of my concerns, is with that, and then with the lot size, are you going to put another community center in that?
No, I mean, it's fine, there's one community center.
Yeah, we have all that, and that is...
Well, I think that was always the point.
Yeah. But I just, that's my concern, traffic on Botler.
Okay.
That housing, I mean, they're going to be, our one lane, which is definitely going to be family, we're not going to have, right over, we're not going to have condos.
No condos, I can't speak, they can't, air fry rentals. Suppose somebody could rent a, a house, but that would be unlikely in a new development.
Yeah, I don't think you can ever stop anybody. I don't think you can ever stop anybody from making a house up.
Yeah, why does it get like that? Yeah, no. It's like that, it's a...
Single family.
Single, single family.
Yes. There's a section, our one lane, the whole section in the township zoning, because the factory area is not coming in.
Oh, okay.
And condos would not be permitted.
Because that's what, the first, we kind of bought the condos, we're going to go in there, right, in some housing.
Yeah, and to, to another point, I think it's going to be very clear whether there's, whether they're going to stick to their original number or last term of lots. It's just a matter of counting how many were on the original proposal and how many are on this new and have been presented today, then it's actually a couple lots less. And the supreme space is bigger under the current plan than it has, than it has currently, presently been defined. Okay?
I have a follow-up question for the applicant based on that.
Please, go ahead.
You know, it's rare that we can sit here and talk about it in a zone management how we're going to solve the traffic problem when there's obviously problems all over our township depending on what traffic and where the street is looking. Do you mind if I just, I have, I have sort one more immediately for... Please, so what I have to do is knowing that there are persons in the neighborhood that are conservative of species and traffic issues, I'm recalling that on the north side of that, there's some open area that are largely from local zones. There looks like a place to pull in, like a, uh, play the word, to pull in, I got it.
And there's a gas well down there.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, come on, late, maybe that ground area where the builder had it is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, was that big enough for a, like a township, fair, patrol car to sit in?
Absolutely.
I mean, would there be some communication that maybe the applicant could have with the safety forces of the conflict? That offer, that ability that, but it's under control?
They, they are willing to use that, they are, again, I encourage the, the residents, just like my neighborhood, if we have problems, we've had problems in my neighborhood, you know, with certain people, we have, it's usually a phone call, but police cars sits there, it's usually solved, solved, very good. Again, they're, they're living there, just, and I, their, my neighborhood, I suggest they do the same thing. Not telling it to be a nuisance to the police, but, you know, if there's, there's good, not following the rules and laws, they should, they should respond.
Our conscience.
Yes, plain conscience, our conscience, please. One other thing, I said, I addressed it earlier before, and, uh, we, there is a tension to farm the property on the south side, just as we've been farmed before. The next phase we're going to build is on the north side up there, so that, that will be, to farm. I did talk to the farmer today and he, it's just, he's led, he's led it in his process.
At some point in time, there's not going to be enough land to farm, correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct, yeah, that's what all he told.
It's always been built into the equation, it's just one that was going to happen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, that farmer farms right next to me, two thirty-five acres. He's cleared some stuff, but he has not planted yet this year. We keep a close eye on him. So I'm pretty sure he just hasn't done it yet.
Can I just ask one more question about the land across the street from Botler? Um, they have some kind of RV thing going on there where they have a track and they're running, do you know about that?
Oh, yeah.
If, if it's been allowed or if it's something that I should address with someone?
Those are not easy.
There's like an ATV trap over there?
Now they've got this property, this is that what people...
Oh, okay, never mind.
Okay.
Can I, can I guess, you know, I was still, I, personally, still learning all this stuff, but...
I'm so surprised I'm going to chair.
I'm vice chair, so I'm wearing a great chair. Um, no, is, is there a way we can address the idea of just putting speed bumps on that road?
It's, it's...
What's that, what's that, whoa, you see that, I should ask that.
Speed bumps on the, on, on, how do you get, where the roads?
Oh.
It's not a...
I know that, I was just curious about how that works. Because it sounds like everybody's issue is through the streets and not the houses.
Angela, I'll be happy to talk to you.
Okay, thanks, I'm just curious. Thanks.
Okay, any other, any other member of the board that has any questions or comments on this topic?
You just, you just talk to your neighbor.
I was just kidding.
All right. If that...
If, if we have, we have four police cars, why don't we just write tickets? That, the tickets will get them to slow down. I mean, there's no two ways to lock down, but there's a speeding problem. They'll, they'll take care of it.
Okay, all right, well, there's, there's only so much we can address. Uh, we're going to, just want to, want to close the discussion, the question, sorry, the question and answer period. Is there any discussion that the board would like to have about themselves?
Well, whatever, if you put this on the floor, I'm going to leave approval of the amendment five seven two one. And it's not necessarily tell you how I would vote, and once we have that on the table, like motion and second, anything to debate or discuss.
Do we have a second or something to debate?
Second.
Okay, Gary, Gary, I'm always going to like to start with, Mr. Steber.
Call anything you want, uh...
Just not speaking?
Yeah. I, I will tell, I will tell the audience and members of the commission that, based on the RPC recommendation, that based on what happened, and what, you know, what was done in two thousand and two, and what the expectations were getting on, and based on everything I've heard, I'm going to hold in favor of the proposed amendment. And I, I do hear the concerns about, you know, streets. I live on a street that is, I got through traffic, I protest. And it's not, it's not a zoning matter. I think they've done a good job of putting together a proposal, uh, that is, that they'll, they'll agree with the board of township trust teams, it could be reported, it could be enforced. So, I'm going to hold yes.
Ms. Abbott, you have any comment?
What's that?
Do you have any comment, Chris?
I don't think so, thank you.
Harrison? I'm trying to put myself in a position of knowing what the board, the trust board was trying to do eighteen years ago, and understanding what the current situation is, and, uh, I'm, I'm with Mr. Steber. I'm leaning for, uh, recommending approval provided the applicant continues to tractionally and bond by the original terms of the agreement to the extent of, uh, keeping this, uh, the well-intended, desirable, uh, neighborhood that up here that was trying to do that every year. And I don't know that the simple zoning will accomplish that. I'm hoping, I'm recommending that, that another extension of the agreement, modified just as needed for the lot size, but not the total number, um, that, that I would be in favor of that.
Thank you. Um, on my part, another one, some of the topics that have been discussed here today, I think were inevitable whether the plans changed or not. People were going to buy houses and using Botler, like they never really did before, for example. And not a good thing, but I think it was inevitable, like, if farmer eventually is not going to be farming the land, we're going to have to go out and do the traffic. I would, uh, hear a bit of Harrison's comments about if they're going to do this, if you get the newest agreement, the new twenty-year, that you verify that the lots are at, and live in the original agreement or less, I think the board has stated. Again, that's just a simple matter of now. And then, in fact, again, here is more open spacing than the original plan. Uh, with all of that, um, I'm going to, if there are any other houses on the floor, you have that in common. Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on the motion for the proposed amendment, or... Ms. Olden?
Yes.
Mr. Steber?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Motion passed. Again, this is, this is a recommendation to the board of trustees, that is another moment of the process. And at this point in time, I would accept any motion, can you, Jerry? Can I, oh, please, go ahead.
Uh, this will be heard by the trustee. Well, uh... Uh, so it'll be, uh, at their next trustee meeting, they'll settle, you may have a motion for this, here.
It's going to be at the township hall, the township hall. And by the way, we appreciate everybody coming out and giving us your input. And you're very respectful and appreciate that as well. Do I have a question?
No.
Second. All votes in favor, should we fight by the same line? Aye, 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 motion passed. Meeting is adjourned.